Make sure that the town hall ghosts or gods or whatever it is leaves the internet alone.
Been a lot of some pretty good.
I know, happening a lot more though.
Do you have any people? The public order of Stephen Town Council meeting agenda for Thursday, September 25th. Do you know, would you please take the vote call?
Councilor Bray, Mayor, Councilor Barker, Mayor, Councilor Brown, Mayor, Councilor Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Michaelson.
Here, would you all please rise for the collective meeting.
Collective meeting. United States of America. And to the world of citizens. On the nation, on the ground, in the visual, with their children.
Thank you all. We want to item number three, public comments, public comments. Not on the agenda, not on the agenda tonight. Get up and state your name, please.
My name is Ariel Leester, my address is 3 T Spring Street. And I would just like to provide an update from Tuesday's comment. As to the water situation that we have and some other issues there on Spring Street. We do still have some of the questions on the sheet that, you know, in two days you guys haven't gotten to. But I was very pleased with the courtesy, the response and all the work that's been done. It's up to the standards that I've seen previously and expect going forward. So very pleased with that, everything looks wonderful. Everybody did a really good job. Also very pleased to have Councilmember Brown came out to our streets, take a look at everything and spoke to me and the other members of our community that were here that I met me. Which was wonderful and Chief Bo came out and my understanding was at your behest to kind of make sure everything was good. We got some calls from him, which we did miss because we thought they were spam calls and he didn't leave any messages. And we kind of dodged those phone calls, so I apologize for that, but they came out. It was wonderful to chat with everybody and got a lot of my questions answered. And it was exactly what I was hoping for and what I truly do expect from the town of Stevensville. Small town community, everybody did a really wonderful job. So I do wanted to let you guys know, thank you so much for doing that. All of the gentlemen that came out were fantastic, they worked really hard as they normally do. And some of the issues from the previous experience, I knew to be a fluke, but I'm glad that they were proven to be true to be a fluke. So we'll just keep our eyes on that going forward. I do still have some questions from the previous evening, so I have more copies of that if you need it. And hope to get those resolved going forward, but I just wanted to let you guys know, thank you for your hard work and your due diligence on that. And if there's anything else you need from us, please keep reaching out, we'll be happy to provide more information.
Thank you, I will address that on my behalf.
Fantastic, thank you sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Public or anything not on the agenda?
Quick little comment, it's not really common, it's information. Just wanted to go back to you guys and to know that we were successful in our radio. As those details unfold and it all comes together, I'll be sure to put back what you guys know what's going on there. Yeah, that's a big win for the town, so anyway, we were successful, so we're going, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes, item number four. Item A, Town Council Meeting Minutes of 9/11/2025, may I entertain a motion, please? Councilmember Barker.
I make a motion to approve Town Council Meeting Minutes from 9/11/2025.
We have a motion by Councilmember Barker, we have a second. Councilmember Smith, we have a motion, we have a second by Councilmember Smith. We have a discussion from the council on the minutes. Councilmember on the minutes. Any comments from the public on the minutes?
I'm just wondering, I'm sorry, Sue Devon, 3056, why these are condensed minutes? Is what it says. September 11, 2025, condensed minutes.
Go ahead, you can answer that.
I put condensed minutes at the top when I'm adding anything to the packet that was maybe left as comment. Or if I have taken in, like when they do their admin reports, I'll say Chief Bo or Police Department Chief Bo's report included in packet. And then I'll just add in the tail ends of these things. I don't have to type in everything that he just read from his report that he provided in the packet. So that's when I condense those minutes.
If people don't have the ability to come here or see them online, how do they know? What actually was said or written?
They read the report, so Chief Bo read his whole report, that's an example. Chief Bo read word for word or number for number his report. So I don't retype that because it's part of that packet, the agenda packet. So then I just put parentheses, how do I say that? I will say, I will say, "Report added in packet" or "Given in packet" or "Provided at table" or, you know, things like that, that's what I condense minutes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments, Sharon?
My name is Sharon G, I live on Valley View Street and I just had a question regarding, I have five weeks worth of minutes that are in this particular packet. And I was just wondering why there are so many weeks that are included in there, or so many side meetings, I guess.
There's only two, 9/11, there's only two meetings.
Oh, I thought there was the 11th, the 14th, the 15th, something.
Can I see which one, please? So I have Council Meeting Minutes for 9/11 and the closed meeting minutes for 9/11. Okay, because the agenda packet is showing more than, okay. Well, I will double check that, I don't think there is, but I will double check that.
Sharon?
From, yeah, from what, 8/7?
The special town council meeting that's included in here.
Yeah, and that's, that was just my comment, because I was just wondering about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, do you know, would you please take the vote?
Councilor Bray.
Aye.
Councilor Barker.
Aye.
Councilor Brown.
Abstain, I was on vacation.
And Councilmember Smith.
Motion passes 3, 4, 1 abstain, thank you. Would you remember item number B, closed meeting minutes of 9/11/2025? Because we can't discuss that, if you called a meeting, so the public can't hear you, so. When you're ready. Councilmember Barker.
I make a motion to approve closed meeting minutes from 9/11/2025.
We have a motion by Councilmember Barker, we have a second. Councilmember Bray.
I have a second.
The motion is second by Councilmember Bray. General, would you please take the vote?
Councilor Bray.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Abstain.
Councilor Barker.
Aye.
And Councilor Brown.
Abstain, I was on vacation.
Motion passes 2, 4, 2 abstain. Moving on to item number five, approval of bi-week claims, may I entertain a motion, please? Councilmember Smith.
I move that we consider claims number 19928 through 19946.
We have a motion by Councilmember Smith, we have a second on the claims. Councilmember Barker.
Second motion.
We have a motion, we have a second by Councilmember Barker on claims number 19928 to 19946, do we have a discussion from the council? Councilmember Brown.
I have number 19936 for the sledge pumps repair kit for $3,044,45. I see that was purchased on 8/5. Did we get our two bids per the personnel, our purchasing policy?
I didn't get anything in writing, but basically there was one, there was one company that makes that, that's the maker of the pump itself. It's called a niche pump, primarily made in Germany, so that's where you have to get the quote.
So we didn't get our two quotes, but what was the brand of the, can you spell the name of the pump?
M-E-I-T-Z-A-T, something like that.
Thank you, and then on claim number 19941, tire repair for the airport, it seemed a little bit high. Is there an explanation for that?
There's actually two claims associated with it, there's one for $140.
Would you have the people come to the, to begin?
Actually, two claims, there's one, I think, for $143, I forget the exact dollar, about $140 something. And then there's a second claim that is a credit because they had an additional charge in that, which was incorrect. So the actual price was $120 something, I don't.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council on the claims? Seeing none, do you know, would you please take the vote? Seeing none, do you know, would you please take the vote?
Councilor Brown.
No.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilor Bray.
Aye.
And Councilor Barker.
Aye.
Motion passes 3 to 1, thank you. Moving on to item number six, I would like to ask permission from the council to suspend council rules to move items number seven A and B up before item number six claimed so we can get him and him back there out of here so they don't have to listen to you when we go to Bobby Shure's presentation. So with that, could I give a moment? Councilmember Barker.
I make a motion to move items A and B of new business up above item six for the case, Bobby Shure.
We have a motion by Councilmember Barker to move those items forward, we have a second.
I'll second.
Councilmember Brown, second, we have a motion, we have a second, do we have a discussion from the council, move those items forward? We have any comments from the public to move those items forward? Seeing none, do you know, would you please take the vote?
Councilor Bray.
Aye.
Councilor Barker.
Aye.
Councilor Brown.
Aye.
And Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Motion passes 4 to 0, thank you. Okay, we'll move along to new business number seven A, discussion decisions, special event permit for brews and brews brew fest. As you know, this is for the scarecrow festival, before we get started, can we get a motion, please? Councilmember Brown.
I move that we approve the special event permit for the brews and booze brew fest.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brown, we have a second. Councilmember Smith, second. We have a motion, we have a second by Councilmember Smith, do we have a discussion from the council, with the council, go ahead.
Just a quick little note, you had mentioned that it was the scarecrow festival, it is not associated with the scarecrow festival.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
So with the council permission, we can let you have your speech. Okay, thank you.
General of the President, Stevensville City Club, again, you're correct, as mentioned, it's no longer associated with the Stevensville Scarecrow Festival. Due to changes in ownership of certain properties and activities that are taking place, we cannot have it this year with the Stevensville Scarecrow Festival and probably will not be able to going forward. So we're proposing it as a separate event, few changes to it, we want to move it over to Los Quake Park, it'll be an over 21 only event. We will however follow the same rules that we do with Creamery, we'll coordinate with Chief Bo and his staff, wristbands, ID checks, the folks that are managing it are all safe surf certified, safe surf certified. Same thing as far as, you know, signing off on a checklist of who can be served, who can't be served, what to watch for, those types of things, volunteers, keeping everybody in control. We don't expect it to be anywhere near the size of Creamery, of course, maybe a couple hundred people. Tents, heaters, DJ, karaoke, costume contest, all sorts of fun, we're hoping this will be a first of more to come. Thank you.
Any questions for Deshaun? Any question from the public, Deshaun? Seeing none, do you know, would you please take the vote?
Councilor Barker.
Aye.
Councilor Brown.
Aye.
Councilor Bray.
Aye.
And Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Motion passes 4 to 0, thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number B, discussion decision, Twin Creek Phase, three extension request. We can see in the packet, we have a letter possibly stating, please accept this letter and my formal request for a three-year extension on the final left period for Phase 3 of Twin Creek subdivision. Current filing date is January 15, 2026. If approved, the new filing deadline would be January 15, 2029. Phase 2 is on track to be finished and filed by its current deadline, however, Phase 3 has proven more complex due to site specific conditions, rising construction costs and market conditions. Also making it necessary to have additional time to complete Phase 3 in a safe and efficient manner. Granting this extension will not affect the conditions of approval or disrupt public facilities. It will simply allow the necessary time to properly complete Phase 3 in accordance with the town's standards. Thank you for your review and assistance, please feel free to contact me if you have any questions and need additional information, sincerely Maxwell, F A A Twin Creeks. So with that, could I get a motion, please? Councilmember Bray.
I move to accept Twin Creek Phase 3 extension request.
We have a motion by Councilmember Bray, do you have a? Councilmember Smith, second. We have a motion, we have a second by Councilmember Smith, do we have a discussion from the council? Councilmember Bray.
I have to abstain due to conflict because I'm a foreign title company.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anything I'd ask? Do you like to make any comments to?
Maxwell, F A A Twin Creek, no, just thank you for the decision, it's been great working with the mayor and the town so far, so we look forward to working on Phase 3 together with you guys. Thank you.
Any comments from the public on the extension of Phase 3 at Twin Creeks? Other comments from the council? Do you know, would you please take the vote?
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilor Barker.
Aye.
Councilor Brown.
Abstain.
And Councilor Bray.
Aye.
Motion passes 3, 4, 1 abstain, thank you. Okay, we'll move back up to now, up to the guests, Bobby Shure, Montana Road Water System. So there've been a lot of misconceptions, a lot of misconceptions, a lot of concerned citizens and we all know, since we raised the water rates last August, there's been a lot of stuff flying around everywhere and they'll come right out and say that there's an election going to happen in a few weeks and the other candidate is running on lowering water rates, so. We're just going to blay up the facts out here and let the public decide for themselves. With that, Bobby.
Thank you for inviting me back to your system. Once again, I am impressed by the team that Stevensville has put together, both in your administration and Public Works Department. You have some excellent people working for your system. To reiterate the rate analysis that we did about a year ago, when we do that analysis, we break out what the loans that the system has, both in water and sewer. We make sure that there's enough money set aside in reserves to service those loans in case of catastrophic emergency events. We look at the total cost of operating operations and maintenance, everything from salaries to pay for clips. We look at the total number of services and we apply that to a spreadsheet and that spreadsheet then will tell us down to each service, each equivalent willing unit, what each service needs to be collected a month to be able to continue to operate that system and pay the bills. NCA codes, 7134301 specify that municipalities, one, the rates have to be fair and equitable. Two, that there has to be enough revenue coming in the door to be able to pay the bills. The councils are exhorted to review their finances at a minimum once a year, up to once a quarter if it's a municipality. And then it also says that they have the authority to change those rates to ensure that the invoices, the expenses that are generated are being paid for. The analysis, it showed what the rates need to be raised to and shortly before the meeting, I was speaking with Mr. Underwood and the two things that I always like to pay attention to, power and chemicals, I had asked Mr. Underwood about those expenses and how much they changed the last year since the last rate analysis. Did you want to share some of those figures?
Between the three highest categories, salaries, utilities and chemicals. In two years, in the house that we did, the sewer had gone $34,000 and the water had gone up $36,590 in just those two years, in just those two, three areas. Not include all the other areas, but that's our biggest expenses in the system right now. That's a total of $70,800 in total, just in those two categories.
Increase.
Increase.
Wow. So I also spoke with DNRC earlier today and one of the things that concerns DNRC and actually concerns all the systems is the cost of power. It just keeps on going up and up and up. And so when I was talking with DNRC, that is the subject that came up and there is a glimmer of hope on the horizon. It's not been fully developed yet, but there is talk of putting together a program that may possibly help finance solar panels for, for certain processes that are using power to help systems lower the amount of power that they have to pull off the grid and also that will help them lower their overall costs or at least keep it from continuing to skyrocket like it has. So those are the things I have in addition to what we looked at last year. Do you see if any have some questions?
Councilmember Barker.
So I'm seeing across the board several towns that have had the same issues that we have had.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I said I have seen over the board with several towns facing the same issues that we are with the increased water and sewer rates.
Several different towns? It's, it's, it's a very hard thing to deal with right now. Something we need to keep in mind, we had 16% inflation four years ago, 18% inflation three years ago. And I didn't see the breakdown for the last third and fourth year, but there was a total of 40% inflation on overall costs throughout the nation. And so that $70,000 raise that you're seeing in those three areas, that's that inflation kicking in and it's just driving the prices up and up and up. And unfortunately, we have to be able to continue to bring in that revenue so that we can pay the vendors so that the service can continue to be provided. When the standards that the United States has set is when the water comes out of your tap, that one, there's enough of it and two, it's safe to drink. There are several areas in this world, you might get water out of your tap, but you don't drink it because it's not safe, it's not safe. So with that, there is a cost that is associated with it.
Councilmember Barker.
What would be the chances that the, we would be lowering our water and sewer bills? Say that again, what would be the chances that we would lower our water and sewer bills?
In order to lower them, your expenses would have to go down. And there's, there's always research going on, one of them I just mentioned. There may be an avenue in the future that may help, I don't want to be too optimistic and say lower the power bills, but maybe keep them from skyrocketing like they are and slow down how fast they're going up. That is an avenue. One of the things that is contributing to the cost of chemicals going up is the expense of producing chlorine, which is the number one chemical used for disinfection of water. The cost of that skyrocketed. There was changes, there was changes in the way that chlorine can be produced. There was restrictions put on the way chlorine can be produced that contributed to the cost of chlorine, the production, the cost of production going up. So that's part of what's going on with that. So if there's a way that could be found to help produce chlorine at a lower rate, at a lower cost, that could possibly translate into lower costs, that as far as, as, those are the only two specific things that I can think of. Your people are constantly looking at and following up on anything that's out there that could help the system lower costs. And we did discuss some of that before this meeting.
Could you answer about our bond debt, how we have to reach a certain threshold, you know, for our water?
I'm sorry, say that again?
You know, our bond debt, cover that?
A bond, okay, so. I don't recall, when is, I believe, if I remember right, we, I did ask that question when we did the rate analysis, that the loans, the bond, the payoff is still so far out in the future that it had to be calculated as part of the rate increase. That is something I do ask when I'm doing a rate analysis because on occasion, there's a payoff date that is going to be within a few months so that we can set that aside. For this system, there, I do not, please remind me if I'm wrong, that there's not a bond that's going to be paid off in, I don't even think in the next three years, I think they're still in effect.
The closest one is 2040.
2040.
Yeah, and then 2051, 2054 and 2056.
Yeah, so the organizations that handle grants and loans, they kind of work together, they go hand in hand and there's boilerplate language that goes with the grants and goes with the loans. And it doesn't matter if you're going with SRF or Rural Development, which is the type of loan Stevensville has. All that boilerplate language says that a system, and specifically the board, has a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that there's enough revenue collected in order to service those bonds and those loans. And you also have to put aside a certain amount to address emergencies and then also to anticipate future capital costs. and then also to anticipate future capital costs. The equipment replacement, infrastructure replacement. And from what I understand, you brought up the fact that Stevensville is actually one of the oldest communities in Montana. And your infrastructure is one of the oldest infrastructures in the state. And unfortunately, infrastructure has a lifespan. And your infrastructure is starting to come close to the end of that lifespan. So that means there's going to be additional repairs. And I do believe, y'all have been doing some leak detection. You've found several leaks. And one of the things that your Public Works Department has been working on is tracking down leaks and fixing those because every leak fixed, that translates into power and chemicals saved because that's water that's actually being delivered to the customer and isn't being treated and then lost. And it's, they're still doing investigation, but it's looking like the reservoir might have some issues. The piping underneath the cement, that's something that they're going to be caring, moving forward with and looking at. And that, whether you choose to replace the reservoir or try and fix that issue, that's neither option is a cheap option. Both of them are going to be expensive. The decision then is which option is best for the system. You?
Councilor Brown.
So I don't know if you drove around town and saw how many yards are bone dry, are brown. People can't afford their water bills, their sewer bills. Mine's was two hundred dollars more all summer long. And I had terrible dry burn spots where the grass is dead. It's to the point where you have to resaw it. The other thing is, isn't there a way that we could work with you to try to figure out maybe something to help with the cost for the people in town to get our rates to a point where people can actually afford them?
So that goes back to your expenses. When we do the analysis, we look at money that was actually spent and entail some of these ideas to lower power costs take effect. That's about the only way I can see to lower your expenses. What you're hoping up against is the NCA code that stipulates that water and sewer has to be self-supported. That means that your revenues coming in have to be sufficient to pay the bills going out. And with that issue, it's a tough issue. This is not, this is not an easy subject. This isn't, oh, too bad, so sad, you know, that's the way it is. That's not, that's not the idea. But there are laws that have to be followed and met. And with that, with the loans, the grants and the loans that the system has received and has, there are stipulations in that paperwork that there are certain finances you have to be able to show in your reserve accounts and with your budget that you're being financially responsible. If those financial institutions feel like that the system isn't taking that responsibility serious, they may have to look at ways to help the system take that seriously. And that's, and your team has done a great job of maintaining that paperwork to show that the system is taking that responsibility seriously. And it is very unfortunate that people are not able to water their loans because of the expense.
We have an influx of people moving out of town because they can't afford the water and sewer bills in town anymore. So we're losing population, which cuts our taxes down. So, I mean, we have to come up with something. I mean, it's going to have to be a discussion point. And the other question I have is, what is the black stuff coming through our water system? It is in our sinks and in our toilets. And you scrub and scrub and scrub and you can't get rid of it. It's an oily substance, to the point where my sister from Wyoming won't even drink our water in town.
So that sounds like it's manganese. That is the exact characteristics of manganese. And that is the geology of your water, where your oils are out coming up. You guys add polyphosphate, don't you? Yeah. You can add polyphosphate to sequester that manganese. That's more of a stance. That osmium, that's a chemical and it's not cheap. But going back to where you're talking about you're losing population because people can't afford the water bills, we can actually expand that into a larger question. People can't afford their homes right now. They can't afford their property taxes. Expenses, the living expenses in this state, if you, doesn't matter what area you look at, the expenses have exploded. I was looking at an article the other day that said housing costs in Montana have gone up by one thousand three hundred and ten percent. So what we're seeing in the water bills, that is also being reflected in all areas of our living expenses. It isn't just confined to our water and our sewer bills. It's across the board skyrocketing.
Councilor.
Just one more question. And I'm not sure how we calculate our sewer during the summertime. Is it calculated on the number of gallons that people are using?
The sewer is a base rate based on the size of the water.
So it isn't calculated on the number of gallons you use in the summertime? Okay, thank you. That was one question I needed answered.
Any other questions from the council? I have a question. Virginia? Could you let the public know last time we had a rate increase before this last one?
In twenty nineteen, November first of twenty nineteen.
And what was that?
Thirty one fourteen for water and fifty one ninety for sewer.
So I think it boils down to, the town has to make a decision. And I pay the same rates as everybody else. We all do, the homeowners. We have to make a decision. Do we want to build for the future of Stevensville? Or do we want to have green lines? Because we can have green lines. But when you're linking eleven million gallons a month of treated water and chemicals going into the town, and we have the oldest aging infrastructure system in Stevensville, then we have to make a choice. Because we're also building for the future and we're building for our children that are here. And I think it's very important that we, because we just played ketchup. When we did the water rate, sewer increase last August, we were just playing ketchup. That's all we were doing. We were getting caught up. And now we have a capital asset fund on both of them and we can start building, fixing our leaks. We also building a grant as we speak to get a new storage tank. That's going to take money too. So all this stuff, it all plays in. And I really think that the towns should seriously think about building towards the future. And I'm a long city Browners. I've heard it all, especially right now. There's a lot of people calling, a lot of people when I'm walking, do stuff and say, is there any way we can lower the rates? Is there any way we can lower the rates? You have to do something. And my only answer to them is, if you have a choice in Stevensville, you can buckle down and live with the current rate and build for the future, fix our leaks, put a storage tank in, pay the wages that we need down there to keep our employees trained and moving forward. Or we can just have green lines. That's the choice of the town. We want to build for the future or just want to look at today? So we look good at the people that are here? So that's my view. Councilor.
Is people in the audience can ask? Okay.
I'll open it up to the public. Would the public like to ask Bobby any questions? How's your chance? Pat.
You're next, man. Hi, I'm Pat Brown here with Stevensville. It's kind of funny that I hear on the streets, which always got me true, that you hear on the streets. There's a lot of threats, there's a lot of accusations, there's a lot of concerns, there's a lot of this, there's a lot of that. The bottom line is, is no one person is to blame for the water or the rates. Not one of us. Not one of us can fix it. Not one of us know how to fix it. But there's one way to understand it. Inflation, cost of living, health, labor, decisions, kidding them about it. Green grass, yeah, need painted. But then again, we'll get in trouble for having to paint on the ground. So it's a tough situation and it all lies on you folks. It all lies on you, sir. It lies on this team here. They're not lying to you. But some of these questions could have been asked a day ago, two days ago, two years ago. You're a newcomer to here. The thing is, is look on your own. Don't listen to nobody. Because I'm telling you what, and I apologize, they're full of frauds. You know that you can deal with a lot of people a lot of time, not know how you do it. Our police force, our maintenance, water, parks, everything else, they're doing the best they can. I watch them, I know them personally. I've been on this goat road before. And so has somebody else sitting by the light switch. We've heard this before, have we not, sir? It is a record that just keeps on going. Energy and supply don't have nothing on it. Expansion, cost of living, growth, people have babies. Well, they're going to be raised in Stevensville. God, pick somewhere we're going to give them water. You do what you can. You do the best thing you can. If the rates raise, so be it. And boy, I know I'm going to get chastised for this. But the fact is, is if you want to drink the water, pay the bill. If you don't want to drink the water, don't come to Stevensville. And we can do our grass. And this gentleman here that did the functions downtown, he'll know when people don't want to move to Stevensville because his numbers will drop. Somebody, somewhere. There's not a better damn town in the state of Montana. And we had that fight how many times or what town was first? If you ain't got the guts to come to this meeting, don't run your mouth. Because your folks do what you got to do and you work how you got to do it. Now I hear, I know it's hearsay, but I will say it. There's going to be a lot of people getting fired for the town of Stevensville. I wish I was an attorney. Imagine that class action lawsuit? Yes! But I'm not an attorney. Quit threatening people. Quit holding crap over everybody's heads. Stay at the meetings, listen to the meetings. Your folks are awesome. You put up with shit, you listen, you jerked around with the stores. Did you hear this? Did you hear this? If you get the council meeting in the minutes, a couple of days earlier, read them. Don't read them here. Read them and do the research that you have at home. We got chastised for that how many times? Do your homework or get the hell out of the seat and let somebody else want to do it. Or stay in the seat and help fix it as a team, as somebody together. Bob, you're doing a hell of a job. And you know, I'm going to be chastised for that because I consider you a friend. All you folks, we've known each other for a couple of weeks, haven't we?
Only two.
All I'm saying is, all these questions are great. All these answers are great. We got to do something or we're going to be dead meat on the road. Wake up, get along, don't listen to some knucklehead saying, I'm going to fix this, I'm going to fix that. If it can't be fixed by the professionals, who the hell's he did he is or she? It's teamwork, not an individual teamwork. And if you don't have a team, you know what you got.
Thanks, Pat. I would like to also add, anybody else? Bobby.
Here's a point that I wanted to make earlier and it slipped my mind. And thank you for saying what you did because you actually brought it back to mind and I appreciate that.
Because it's bad, I'm blaming them.
So when we're talking about expenses, whether we're talking, when we're talking about, whether we're talking about a town or a water and sewer district or a regional water system, they're all classified as nonprofit business. When we say nonprofit business, everybody gets stuck on the word nonprofit. And many people assume nonprofit means, oh, that means the bank account has to zero out. It's not what nonprofit goes for. When we're talking about a for-profit business, the objective is the profit. You're building up the profit in the accounts, you're building up the profit in that business. When we're talking about a nonprofit business, the objective is sustainability. And that is what this system has been working on. And that is one of the reasons why I complimented your team because you really do have a great team. They understand that word sustainability. Sustainability means you have enough money in the bank to make the repairs. You don't have to take out a loan when you have a repair. And it means that you're setting money aside for the future. In this case, you have older infrastructure. Your team is starting to address that issue and they're trying to get ahead of that issue and fix that issue before it results in no service because that piping has failed and you can no longer deliver that water or conversely, take that water away. That was the point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, let me jump up here. I wanted to ask, is there like an end goal insight? Like what is our plan for what we're saving up for? You know, I know our water bill has some for futuristic replacement potentially? Or is it just fixes that we're going to be paying? Is there any plan to replace any of our water systems? Or, you know, like when you're in high school and you save up for your first car and you've got like the little rubber ducky thing and you, you know, that type of thing? Like how do we, how do we know that we're getting closer to replacement?
Well, we're just getting started because, like you know, we just raised our rates last August.
Yes.
That's a little, a year in now. And now we're in the process, if you look at our capital assets for our water and sewer, we'll be able to start fixing our leaks, which we've already started. We just had a leak detection service come through. And we've started that. In fact, one of the leaks that they're working on was on Spring Street. So I mentioned the storage tank. We're getting a grant for that. And a storage tank, I've been told now, costs between three to four million dollars. We would have no way, no way to afford that. Of course, we'll take a grant to do that, but I'm sure there's a match involved.
Yes.
This is something we've been talking about for thirty years in this town, a storage tank. I went all the way back to two thousand and two when they were talking about that. So using our two thousand sixteen growth policy. And we also have one of the oldest dying infrastructure plants down at the treatment plant, water and sewer. As Steve mentioned before, we're on year twenty five, on year twenty down there. It's in bad, bad shape. I can't tell you how bad it is. I can't tell you how close we were to losing our sewer down there. We were this close. And now, thanks to passing the budget and getting Gina on it, getting this SCADA system started yesterday on it already, we're being able to hopefully get ahead of that. I mean, there is so much to do, Melissa, there's so much to do. We can't just pinpoint where to start here because, you know, we don't really know where a lot of the leaks are yet, even though we had a leak detection like Spring Street.
Yeah.
See the report here? With the ready water line damages caused by the paving of Spring Street. We don't know that. We know one last year and now two. And we believe, Steve and I, we paved that street and the vibration and the tamping that the water lines below there are so old that they just got shook up and broke. Back to the aging infrastructure that we have in this town. Just admission street last year, one twenty eight million dollars water line. That was federal money with five hundred or seven hundred thousand dollars of ours matched.
Seven hundred ninety four thousand.
Yeah, seven hundred eighty four thousand dollars we had to pay out of our money. And that was before we raised our rates.
So is there, is any of that money going to futuristic replacement? Or is it all going to current repairs? to current repairs at this point?
Current and future.
So we have a little bit going to both places? We thought like the bank was saving up and then a current account that we're spending on?
That's what the capital asset account is about.
Okay.
Put that in here and that pays for all the stuff on the way now that comes out and future repairs that they go.
So it's all one, one thing, so to speak?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? I'd also like to add that we have a water rights issue going on. And the town has already vested, how much Gina, over a hundred?
About a hundred and twenty plus dollars.
Hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of water rights that we paid already, that we have to have. And that money comes out of water and sewer. And we cannot grow, as you know, we have a development out of town with a lawsuit hanging over our head, it's called Burn Forest Estates. The main issue behind that is water rights. That's why we've been working so frantically to get those water rights so we can get Burn Forest Estates moving, which brings in more revenue as more homes come in. And that costs money. Could even have to put in, well, the developer pays for all the lines and everything, but bringing it to them, all the chemicals, all the additions, all the increased costs that we're moving towards the future, that costs money. Pat, ready to stand up?
No, go ahead. On that note, new construction as far as new, new systems, new houses and everything else. Are we raising the rates as far as hookup on that? Because it is, it is a privilege, it is a process, but it's not free. What are we doing about that cost of increase?
That's a complicated issue because you have to do an impact fee study. You have to, you have to do impact fees, as Cindy Brown knows, we have to have a commission. We have to have a committee, like a board. You have to do a study. It takes somebody a year to do all that before you can even raise that, the impact fees. Yes, you're right, they do need to be raised.
They haven't been raised in years.
Twenty-something years. And when Mayor Gibson was here, he wanted to look at it, but then of course he left. I brought it up to a meeting earlier this year and basically got tabled because there was a lot more, I didn't think it was that in-depth and it's very in-depth, what you have to do. So maybe we could put a commission together if you get on it.
Oh, that's good. I have other implications.
But no, you're severely right, Pat.
Everything goes up and everything costs, it's just like a speeding ticket. I'm sure they've got it. Just, just your size alone makes them go up, right? But you know what I'm saying? There's other ways to generate money, there's not a way to fast line that to make sure that we can on the, on the hookup fees, a little bit more money. Part of that can go towards the sewer or the water, whatever means we did. But I know everybody has it in their hand somewhere or some way.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes, Pat, that was one of the things I asked as, when I started four years ago or three and a half years ago on the council. We need to look at our infrastructure fees and hookup fees and it's kind of been.
I believe your dad was part of that stuff too. We're back here, we fought hard for that.
Yes, and if they need to be looked at, we have to figure out, get a game plan, get those, some of those fees increases because it's definitely something we have to look at.
Instead of, instead of the community always bearing the cost, you know, share the wealth a little bit and understand that, work together.
Any other questions from the public? To Bobby? Any questions you want to ask any of Gina, Robert or Andrea about our water? Now's the time, they're here. Ready with the guests? Any questions to you? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you.
And we're on to item number eight, board reports.
I guess I'm the only one who has a board report. A park report. They're looking, we gave them the okay to maybe get us some more information, bring them before the council. Information on the community garden they want to do over there off of Sixth Street in the Dickerson Park, in the park over there. They have sponsors for the garden beds and stuff. The thing that we would have to figure out is the water. Once again, it comes down to water. That it would cost down the water to water their, the community garden. So we have to think about that. Do we charge? Or how do we get the garden watered? We're going to get more information on sponsors for the park, like Adopt a Park or something. The mayor was working on that. So the most important news is the unveiling and dedication of the Seasons sculpture. That it will be part of the Scarecrow Festival on 10-3 at 4:45 in town at the Creamery Park. So people get out, go see that beautiful new statue that they're going to unveil. Oh, is 10-3 at 4:45 is the unveil?
Okay, that's it for board reports. Moving on to town council committees.
I just had a thought about the park and watering. I know that these get like rain catchment barrels, maybe they would be a cheaper option than running water straight to the, and then you could just, well, right, because it doesn't have to be filtered water to go on the plants, so.
Councilmember Warren?
Since we have some new people coming to council meetings and stuff, I was wondering, can we get the cash and actual reports so that people get that information? Because we have some interested people and it would be great to catch them up on that, the cash versus the actual.
Can you do that? Any other council comments? Gina, I'm going to run me the executive report. I'll answer a few of the questions that were on the survey the other night that were brought up. Were there any water line issues or damages caused by the paving of Mission Street? I think there were just some pressure issues, correct? Some people had, some people had low water pressure there and we did that. But other than that, I don't think, can't think of many others.
You finally raised a leak signal.
There was some drainage issues over there by Mission, by Taffix, the next house by there. But other than that, we did a walk through there. Couldn't find any. Were there any water line issues or damages caused by the paving of Spring Street? Well, obviously, yes. We know two so far. One last summer, about a month after it was done, and about 20 feet east of that, we found two of them. And we think that when MR did the paving and their day and all that tacking, like I said earlier, it shook some stuff up in those little water mines underneath. We don't have radar and we can't have eyesight, so we can't see the leaks underneath until they bubble up. And that's just the way it works there. Are there any active leaks in the town of Stevensville that need repairs? Well, we just did a leak detection. Guy came through, we found some leaks, not a lot, but some. And that was one of them on Spring Street there. And another one was out there by, couple at Creaseide. I think that was 500% we shut down. I think they, I think we corrected them. Because we had just flushed a whole, and all that did get, I mean, your tiny trip was here. I think Creeseide is pretty new. There's one on Palm Street. Called Ford's in College. Yeah, that might be a mine. It's small, but we think it could be there. It's an old gusher. Any active leaks that the town needs repairs? Well, yeah. When you're leaking eleven million gallons of ground a month, I would say that we had some leaks somewhere. Have all necessary repairs been completed or scheduled? That's his time now.
Schedule. We got to lose schedule.
We have to reschedule, yeah.
And all repaired.
Have the residents of Stevensville made aware of all repairs and expected costs? No, because we don't know what the leaks are yet and we don't know the cost until we find it. Was a repair at 317 Spring Street an emergency repair?
Yes.
Yes. Does the town of Stevensville require a 24-hour notice to repair any non-emergency repairs that may interrupt utilities?
I don't know, I did 48 last time, so I'm not sure about, a minimum would be for scheduled. Maybe, I don't know, I don't know for that one.
Is the town of Stevensville allowed inter-private property or is residents of private utilities in the course of repairs? Something given?
No.
Will the pavement and shoulder damage of Spring Street be repaired by the end of the year?
Yes, the asphalt paper has been called and he's hoping to get there next week. English calls.
We're getting down wire, right?
Yeah, it's going to be a call, but he knows it and he's the original guy that prepared this.
I mean, he did good work.
Yeah, so he's, he said, I'll try to get him next week. To me, that means a week out.
Yeah.
We'll see.
Is the town of Stevensville compliant with all audits? And lastly, on Monday of this week, I did an inspection of Berta Farms' property with town attorney Greg Overstreet, council president Cindy Brown, Chief Bo and I, Sarah Urfer and Thomas Orr, who represented Berta Farms. So I did through a walkthrough and I come out and say it looks worse than it was before. The next step Greg is going to do, he's going to file for a motion to bring that before the judge so we can end this thing and move on because it's been going on for so long. And I think we've got enough data and enough evidence to bring before the judge to say we need, we need some help here cleaning this place up. Because it's been waiting on, we're tired of Berta Farms just dragging it on, playing games, on and on. Of all the things of being a mayor since I've been here, that is the most distressing thing for me. It is the most, because it's so, been going on so long, over 40 years, on and on. And now it's dragging us all through it again. And it can't be any more frustrating than it can be to Pat, Mel, Lowey, they are the ones that sued to try to get it cleaned up. That's where we are there. With that, that is my executive report. That's going to get a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
The motion we have is.
I have one thing.
I have everything.
Wait, just one thing. I, I really want to thank Chief Bo. He's a rock, he's a good man. He's been a real good asset to this town. He's helped tremendously, one of the speeders up and down Third Street, out of control. And it's the 15 mile an hour speed limit, nice. Great guy, great guy. We are gifted to have.
Thanks, Pat. So, fourth and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam, for the, for the, it's tense. Trendy day.
Steve?
I, I don't know. There.
The one that just broke.
Yeah, there's undergrounds.
They play pipe and all.
There's some clay shooter bunches.